All right. Good morning, everyone. We are going to go ahead and get started with today's committee of the whole. And to start us off, I have two items. One, I want to introduce you to two students from North Park Montessori, who are going to be with me this morning. They are filling in and experiencing a mayor for the day. So here I have Walker Ejac. And then over here, I have Sarah Robinett. So they'll both be with us this morning. And they'll be learning about city government and city halls. So hopefully you'll have a chance to meet all the commissioners around the table and then spend some time talking about issues afterwards. That's right. So I'll start with having Sarah call us to order. You can take that, practice that.
Right here.
Yeah, there you go. Very good. She's a pro. She's a pro already. So we are happy to have you both here. And to start us off this morning, commissioners, before we get to our action items, I want to take just a couple of minutes to recognize our very own. We have, and commissioners, you may remember this, every year, we have what's called the Dr. Elmer Schnorr Scholarship. And this was a scholarship that was set up by a former city physician. This is when the city had a physician on staff. And this scholarship was set up and established in 1954. And it's a scholarship available to city employees and/or their children or dependents. So this year, we are excited to welcome and congratulate Mr. Aiden Wakeman. He is the son of Reed Wakeman, who serves our city as a communications supervisor over in the police department and dispatch. And then Stacy Wakeman. So I would like the city manager to join me down here to congratulate Mr. Aiden Wakeman and to get a picture. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So should we get a picture here? And then you can tell us where you're going to school.
Sure.
All right, you want to say a few words?
Sure. I will be using this scholarship to attend Grace Christian University in the fall. That's right between here and Wyoming. And I'm going to be using that to study music.
All right. So congratulations again, and thank you for coming down. Now, I will turn it over to our city manager for the first item before us today. And that is a discussion on our 2020 preliminary fiscal plan.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners, deputy mayors. Today, we want to continue our conversation of our budget deliberations. And we're going to follow up on several information that we shared last couple of meetings. We want to provide an update to our police and fire pension fund. And I believe, if you recall last meeting, I shared we had some preliminary information, and we were able to confirm that update. And we want to talk about the impact on our FY '20 budget. And with that information, we are recommending that we make some adjustments to defer some of the recommended changes in the budget until we get a little bit more planning experience and perhaps come back mid-year and see which items we might be able to approve at that time. We also want to address other inquiries that you've made that we have perhaps not answered all within the session and make sure that we answer any questions that you might have. And lastly, we want to follow up on some of the items we discussed last week when we discussed the mobility section about parking fees. And we have a few updates to share this morning. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. DeLong.
So first up will be Jeff Dode, our CFO. And he will talk about the pension fund and the implications for our general operating fund.
Morning, Mayor, commissioners and city manager Washington. So yeah, as you have heard rumors of, the police and fire, typically this time of year, we use last year's 12/31/17 valuation reports to put in estimates for the police and fire pension. I actually built in a half million dollar unfavorable experience into each of the years. Well, when we got the actual draft report, the results were less, or significantly worse than that. So we'll go over what we intend to do to fit those into the budget. So, and just as a note, this is still a draft. Actually, our report is being presented to the pension boards tomorrow, and I'll be attending that meeting as well. So slide four, you can see the original numbers we used in the fiscal plan FY '20, and then the revised proposed updated rates. And you can see the proposed changes. And if you know, we're also intending to do an 18-month deferment because every year when we put this budget together, we're surprised by these rates. So we talked to the actuary representatives, and they said we could do a deferment of the rates. So from now on, we're going to use December 31 of '18 rates. We'll go into effect July 1 of '21. So it's going to give us a little more time for planning. Now, we still need to review that with the pension board, but they don't see a significant issue with this. And I've spoken to our union representatives as well, and we'll go over that tomorrow. So it actually results in a slight decrease in FY '20, as you see, of .22 percent. But then you can see in FY '24, it's 7.4 percent additional percent of pay as presented in the report. Slide five shows the general fund, five by five. That was in the preliminary fiscal plan. You can see we had a surplus of $776,020. And then some operating losses and ending fund balance of 14.3 percent in year five. And as a reminder, our policy fund balance percent is 15 percent. On slide six, you'll see our proposed revisions. And I'll go over what these include. The red lines indicate changes that we're making to the general fund statement. And actually, you'll see we now show a surplus in FY '20 and FY '21, and then ending right at 15 percent in the fifth year there. Summary of the proposed changes. So there was three positions. And as Mr. Washington indicated, these are deferments. So we're going to remove these from the final fiscal plan and reevaluate mid-year once we get the revised pension report at the end of the year. So we're anticipating removing one of the admin analysts in planning, the budget analyst position, and then the senior electrical engineer. And we made some adjustments to capital. So right now, we kept the purchase of the land for the Division Street Fire Station in the budget. However, we're going to defer the actual building of that facility. So you see, we took out some engineering for $200,000. We removed the proposed bonding. And if you recall, the MLK Lodge was actually going to be included in that bond. So we put that back in as a cash-funded project now. So that project remains, but the bonding for the fire station is removed. And then some of the other adjustments at the bottom, we removed some contract services, the energy sustainability budget. We reduced the 61st District Court subsidy by $50,000. We still feel that gives them enough cushion to keep a positive fund balance. We added $50,000 in income tax temporary staffing. And you'll see why that's needed in a minute. And then we actually reduced $50,000 in temporary staffing in the comptrollers department in all years. And they're going to backfill that with a current position. And then we, as the budget increased, we increased laps in the two final years by $250,000 a year. And that's typical. As the budget continues to build, that lapse would be seen as increasing as well. So to get, part of the fix that we did for this budget is we upped the income tax growth from 3% to 4% in FY '20. I spoke extensively with the income tax staff, and they felt with additional staffing, temporary staffing services, they could work on compliance activities. And they felt comfortable upping that to 4%. And that gained about $4.5 million of extra revenue to the general fund. And then we're reallocating a quarter percent of income tax from the capital reserve back to the general fund. Now, we're able to do that by cutting the Division Street Fire Station. And here's the original capital reserve fund forecast in the preliminary fiscal plan. You can see we're positive in all years there. And then the revision, you can still see we're positive in all years. So I think these are good adjustments we made. Again, we'll reevaluate as we get more information further in the year. And I think the 18-month deferment will give us better planning tools in the future. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Mayor, if I could, before questions begin. And just to set context, actuaries typically look back at past performance, and their reports are not reflective of current market conditions. So this report, as our CFO indicated, was as of December 31, 2018. And if you can recall, the market had a significant downturn towards the end of 2018. It has since fully recovered, for the most part. But the actuarial valuation does not reflect market recovery.
Correct.
Because it's time-based. And so our conservative fiscal sustainability is very important. And we've said publicly that we aspire to get the highest bond rating as possible. And I believe that this organization is well-managed, well-run. And the changes in actuary evaluation really has little impact on FY '20. The changes we are recommending is more so to ensure our long-term financial sustainability over the five-year forecast. So actually, there's not an adjustment that's needed for FY '20.
It was actually just like downward adjustment.
Right, it's a downward adjustment. But if we wanted, we're playing the long game, if you will. We're looking at the long-term stability of our organization. I heard Commissioner O'Connor and I think some of the other commissioners have talked about even reserving more. So this ensures that every year of our fiscal forecast, that we will meet our financial policy. There are other organizations who really only, if it's not capital, they only budget one year at a time for the general fund. But we have, which is one of the reasons why I think the radio agencies really should appreciate the fiscal work that we do here. And so I want to thank the staff for the agility that they demonstrated. And again, this is not saying no to some of the things we had planned. This is not now. Hopefully, when we come back mid-year, we will see stronger recoveries in the market sustained from what has occurred from December 2018. And we can reevaluate those positions. Certainly, if not mid-year, then they're at the top of the order for our next fiscal year in planning.
Okay, so I'll open it up. Commissioners, any questions about that? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I would just say that this makes sense because we've seen over time, the global marketplace has had greater dips and peaks than we used to have. And so I think we just have to be prepared for that new reality. There was a downturn just this week again in the market. So we just need to be prepared for that. And I agree with Commissioner O'Connor's desire to make sure that we've got a healthy fund balance.
All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Mayor, just an FYI, this will require an ordinance change, which we're currently working on with the attorney's office. And they were doing some other changes anyway, so we'll try to bring that in June.
Okay.
For that 18-month deferment.
Okay, thanks. All right, with that, we'll proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, and city manager. And also thank you to our CFO, Mr. Dode. It is so easy to mess that up. And I've known him for a long time. So with that auspicious introduction, we'll start going over some questions, inquiries that required follow-up. So these are largely from our last session. So in the area of safe community, a question came up, can we provide flexible hours for community police officers? And the answer is, yes, we can. But we have to work through the collective bargaining process to do that. So the schedule of their work time is provided for in the collective bargaining agreement. So we would have to work through that to provide a little more flexibility. Another question was, are we considering?
I'm sorry, Eric, can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure. Yes, you may.
So I'm just curious, then, with the proposal to add officers, but then add civilians to free up officers to do evening and weekend shifts for community policing, that's not impacted by the collective bargaining agreements?
It doesn't, I don't believe it says time of day. So I think we have the ability to flex that way. But we will investigate that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, like, what we're proposing is okay and not prevented by our current collective bargaining agreement?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, and without getting into the particulars, I think my conversations with the chief have been with that end of mind to ensure that we're able to reallocate officers for that second shift. And so I've not been made aware of any prohibitions in doing that.
Okay, all right. It's just flexibility of the current?
Yes. Okay, so the next question is, are we considering flexing parking citations to MOBAG GR? And you'll recall that the Hilliard-Hines Staffing Study and Deployment Study recommended that this be considered. And initial discussions have begun. We'll evaluate those options, and we'll take care in the planning and deployment of any changes. So it is potentially possible. We, and we'll take a look at that. We want to maintain our flexibility as we do that and make sure that when we do it, we do it in the best possible way. We also will look at the expansion of volunteers for parking citations. So we have police volunteers. And we have to have an ordinance amendment to accomplish that. And we'll bring that forward to you in June. And then can we shift responsibility for event pedestrian management to non-sworn personnel? And the discussion was comparing them to school crossing guards. And the answer is that we've determined that state law does limit our flexibility there. And so if we want to do anything in that regard, we have to amend state law. Okay, next, in health and environment. This goes back a session, and there was?
Mayor, Mr. DeLong, before you go for it, and I just want to clarify. There was also a question if other jurisdictions have that type of flexibility in their operations. And we were, in our research, made aware that there are other communities in the state of Michigan who have non-sworn officers controlling traffic. And you'll receive some information, or have received some information from city attorney. I believe the city of Detroit utilizes non-sworn personnel in that manner. But we will have to have more conversation around what's permissible, non-permissible around state law.
So more work to be done.
All right. So we'll move on to health and environment. And we had a question about biodigestion and what is the schedule? So staff is working and has completed an assessment of the project as part of the transition of the project manager. And based on that assessment and delivery dates for the RINs scrubber units, we'll make necessary adjustments and will provide a detailed report in July of 2019. The next element that you'll see of that project is award of the segment for construction of the RINs scrubber units. And we expect that to come before you in the near future. So a question came up, and a discussion came up, how much are we investing in lead remediation? And just for, by way of background, we're in the third year of a $2.9 million lead hazard control grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that we have administered here. And I think it's our seventh grant. That grant will expire in October of 20, October 15. And when that does, we will, and before it expires, we'll reapply for the next round when that application is released. Also, in the water fund, we're investing $1 million this year for full-led service line replacement and expect to be investing that amount every year into the future. Also, we will carry forward the $50,000 that is recommended for investment in the third ward equity for equity fund for lead and outreach awareness. And we also are working with partners. We're supportive of the investments of Kent County, who have recently added two lead investigators to their Department of Health staff. We're continuing and have initiated and will continue to work with state partners on development of legislation to facilitate investment in lead remediation as well. So those are our actions in the area of lead remediation.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner?
Mr. DeLong, I didn't see this, but how much have we spent thus far in lead reduction?
If Ms. Bahatch is here, she may be able to answer that question. So over the last period of grants that we've had? So Ms. Bahatch is our managing director of community development?
So we've had approximately seven grants, starting back in 2004. So it's probably close to $16 million of investment over that time period. And keeping in mind that when we do our housing rehabilitation program also, we are using the CDBG dollars as well to invest in lead remediation in those projects.
So Connie, just clarify, in addition to the $16 million that's specific for lead remediation, there's additional dollars through the rehab program?
Well, yes. When we're doing those rehabs, we try as much as possible to maximize the resources that we have in place. But the lead grants also require us to match. And we're allowed to use our block grant program to do that. So when we do those housing rehab projects, we will either use CDBG dollars for those rehab, to do the lead in those projects, or complement lead projects with CDBG for the match. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
And I don't have the numbers in terms of units off the top of my head, but it's around $1,500 to $1,700, somewhere around there.
Connie, maybe it would be helpful to have the recent report and presentation that your department did to the Lead Free Kids Group? Maybe send that to the full commission? Because that had numbers based on how many homes and units this year and in years past.
And we can give an update.
Great, thanks. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate. You said seven grants since 2004?
And the NOFA hasn't been released yet for the next round. But we would be eligible to apply for that and plan to. So we'll be spending our summer doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. In the area of governmental excellence, there was a question regarding whether we should consider setting new policy targets for general fund and budget stabilization fund reserves. And our CFO and fiscal staff have begun a review of financial policies and have, in consultation with the bond rating agencies, regarding how we might amend our current financial policies. And we want to be sure that we're making meaningful improvements. So the projections for the budget we're recommending to you have been revised to maintain a 15% general fund balance throughout the planning period. And fund balance policy will be considered as part of the recommendations that the CFO and our fiscal staff are bringing forward. Then a question came up about the Calder Stabeel. This is the anniversary year, of course. And when will we do the restoration work? And we're going to begin the restoration work after the festival season is over this fall. So in mid-late September. The project cost is estimated to be about $300,000. And it will take about eight weeks, up to eight weeks, to complete. Engineering staff is coordinating with the Calder Foundation to make sure we're doing an appropriate restoration. And that's the background on the Calder. In terms of economic prosperity and affordability, there was a question whether the Parks Port-a-Potty solution could be, which we're using in Briggs Parks and other of our parks, and has worked very well there, whether that might be a solution or part of a solution for Hartside. And that's a good suggestion. It may have application, and will be reviewed with other year-round alternatives. In mobility, there was a question about an RFP for e-scooters and bike share. And staff is developing an RFP for both of those services. And we'll have that ready to issue once the bicycle action plan is adopted by city commission. We believe that that'll be coming forward to you in June. And then an RFP timeline will be finalized after that is adopted. And then, will the city invest in main mobility service in fiscal year 2021 and beyond? And this year, the city has invested $250,000 to support the pilot project with main mobility and private partners. Service to the public is expected to begin in July of this year. And this, I want to point out, is a first pilot of what we hope are a series of connected autonomous vehicle pilots within the city of GR. The results of this pilot will provide information that's required to evaluate future investment in a service like main mobility or even main mobility itself. And that concludes our follow-up on inquiries of commission.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question regarding the e-scooters and wondering whether, I know they're coming, and we have to prepare, same thing with bicycles. But at the same time, I am concerned about accidents and data. And given our emphasis on Vision Zero, how we're going to address that, particularly around right turns? Because from what little I've read, that there are accidents that happen. And I don't know whether we can do anything in the city about that, especially if we can identify particular intersections that are problematic or if MDOT governs all of that.
Okay. We'll take that into consideration as we're developing the RFP. So obviously, we want to have safe operation, too. And so we'll do the best we can. I think the idea of the RFP is to get ahead of the somewhat scattered approach that some providers use, where someday they just show up and you have e-scooters in your house, you know? So we want to try to prevent that by doing the RFP.
That's a good question. Fortunately, I think there are cities that we can learn from that have been responding to e-scooters for well over a year now. And there are some safety issues that they have addressed because of that. I think the big one is accidents on sidewalks, where scooters hit pedestrians. But I'm sure that's probably been, or is. I don't see Josh, but he's shaking his head. So I think I've sent you quite a bit of stuff as well on things I've read. All right, other questions? Someone down here want a picture on an e-scooter? Is that what I heard you talking about? A race? Commission race on the e-scooter, going through a ribbon cutting? All right, commissioners, any other question on that section? All right, we'll move to the next section.
Okay, so at our last meeting on May 7, we introduced two rates within the context of the budget discussion. One was a proposed residential rate, and one was a proposed, the idea of a parking maximum rate. So I'll talk about the residential parking rate first. So we've continued engagement with stakeholders and persons on the waitlist for residential parking and have invited them to come to the public hearing that we'll be having this evening on the budget and to provide their input and comment. We hope to bring back adoption of the residential parking rate on May 21 for your consideration. Seems to be pretty straightforward and in alignment with the goals of our strategic plan and also GR4. Then, on the parking maximum rate, the project that was being, that has been considered, that is affected by the rate is Consumers Energy Project on Alabama Street. And the planning commission approved that project on May 9. So the company has submitted a community benefit plan. And it contains value that exceeds whatever the amount of the proposed rate might have been. And the company has demonstrated they're providing significant value to the community in alternate ways. And these ways would be transportation demand management, pedestrian mobility within the area. And they are, it's a good plan. Also, so what we intend to do is recommend to you that we accept the proposed community benefit plan. And we'll share that with you, of course, before May 21. And then we're also recommending that we defer the further action on the parking maximum rate and refer the concept to the team that is doing the parking master plan process of the Equitable Economic Development Plan. So those would be our recommendations regarding the parking maximum rate and the residential parking rate.
All right, any questions on that? All right, I'll just say that I appreciate everyone working in response to the concerns that were raised after our last meeting. So thanks for coming to what I think is a good plan.
You're welcome.
All right. Our next section is just a review of the budget. City manager, you want to add anything else or bring anything to our attention?
Well, this is your, this is our last session today before the public hearing tonight. And we really wanted to make sure we had your feedback today because the budget staff, and I may need our CFO to comment, really needs the remainder of the week to prepare for the? for the final adoption of the budget. So today is really an important day to get your feedback. I think a few more days and it will be difficult to do the reprojections of a lot of significant portions of the budget that really interplay off other areas. But in the event we do need more time than the 21st, we do have a meeting scheduled on the 23rd. But hopefully, we've done our due diligence to answer your questions, focused on primarily the changes, the significant changes that align with the strategic plan. And again, I want to thank the staff for their work collectively, as well as specifically the financial staff for their work in the proposed budget. But I think we've done our best to anticipate your questions, and some of those were easy to anticipate because you were involved in helping us formulate strategy. And while we are unable to fund everything to the level that we would like to in the strategic plan, I think this is going to be a good basis for us to begin our planning for next year. And after the adoption of the budget, shortly thereafter, we'll, don't get too comfortable, we'll come back and talk to you about what we should be considering for FY '21. So with that, I want to thank staff, thank you mayor for allowing us this time doing Cal to have this discussion.
Thank you. And I anticipate we'll get comments tonight, so if there are things that come up tonight that you want to follow up on, please do that after our meeting tonight or tomorrow morning with the city manager. All right, any final comments? Commissioner?
Thank you, City Manager and team, for the presentation this morning. I do have a question, City Manager, and I don't think we had this discussion here, but seems to me that we talked a little bit about the historical context for some of the staffing positions in previous budgets. And, you know, I just thought it would be great to have that conversation here so that the full commission can have in public a discussion about how in the past positions have been added to the budget. And then, you know, if we could bring all of the positions that you're proposing to kind of in one document so that we can see those at a glance as we're having kind of this historical context. Because I thought it was helpful to hear that, you know, at the onset of a budget, we may have approved one number, but after the budget was adopted, there had been a number of amendments that would have taken place after the budget had been adopted in the past. And your thinking behind trying to avoid doing that in the future. And so if we could have that information, I think that would be helpful as an additional item to discuss. I know that in our third ward briefing, we talked a little bit about the third ward equity fund and, you know, I won't give the history lesson again, but just, you know, we kind of talked about the context behind that fund and the desire to see, you know, more with capital improvements or capital investments this year, more equity in that. And I think when we talked before, there still was, I think, 20 and 22 million allocated for first and second ward in this budget, and for third ward, it was 6 million. And so not only did we not add anything to the fund, but then we also still have a budget that's, in my opinion, inequitable. So just wanted to kind of talk through that. And then I think the response regarding the police department and the crossing guards was a bit vague, so I'm curious to know kind of what we mean by we'll move forward. Because I've been asking this question probably for three or four years. I'm afraid that I'll be gone by the time we get a full answer if we don't get really specific about when we'll revisit that topic and have, like we do with the others, you know, a timeline in which we're prepared to come back before the commission. And then the last thing, Commissioner Moody, I just wanted to follow up on your question regarding the city's investment in lead, and just wanted to specifically note that although we have had the grant from HUD, it is HUD's grant, and it is, you know, they are federal dollars. The city itself has not allocated any dollars from the general fund to support lead remediation. And so I think, you know, one of the things that I've expressed repeatedly is, especially since serving on the county's lead task force, is that we need to also invest from our dollars, from the general fund, into lead remediation. I am obviously grateful that we have a campaign that will help the community. I think that that's something important for the community to understand. And I was just talking about this on the radio the other day, and people just don't fully understand how, you know, everyday normal behaviors with repairs and updates to your home, how lead can be, how lead could potentially impact their homes. And so I'm grateful that we'll have a campaign to help educate the public about those things.
Thank you for that update. I was under the impression that it was budgeted in the city, but thank you for educating me in that arena.
My pleasure.
So City Manager, do you want to respond to any of that?
Sure. I wanted to just make sure, so staffing, equity fund, police specifically, and then lead are the four areas of questions that, or conversations that I heard. Regarding staffing, and I'll take us back to our kickoff on the 23rd, and I think we did cover the intention of the ads this year of being more front-end loaded and not incrementally done throughout the year through budget amendments. There is, and I don't have the page in front of me, but in our, your budget book, in the city manager's, I think in my transmittal, there's a historical chart that shows the staffing levels over the years. And I can't recall the page of that, but that helps to put it in some historical context. We had the conversation last week about, particularly when we talked about economic prosperity, and economic prosperity and affordability, about the historical staffing commitments that were made at budget. And specifically, we talked around the issue of business developer and how the concept this year, that was, that was part of our public conversation, how the conversation this year, for some, sounded very familiar to budget concepts that were proposed in years past, certainly prior to my arrival. And I did go back and have the conversation with the staff to talk about, you know, having integrity in our budget submittals and making sure that we're accountable to do what we propose to do. And I cannot, nor will I try to explain historically what happened prior to my arrival. My commitment, though, is particularly, one reason why I do want the performance management function to be fully resourced, is that whatever accountability metrics we have with any organization, we will report on that frequently internally and to the commission to make sure we are fully accountable. And I have Ms. Sutter's commitment to make sure that we will, we will make sure departments implement the very things that are policy, as well as the things that are funded. That implementation, I am real big on implementation. Matter of fact, the reason why we had this budget discussion on the parking rates is because it was policy that was decided 2015, 2017, but implementation that was deferred. Same thing for the third ward equity fund, 2018, policy decided, implementation deferred. Same thing with the housing fund, policy decided, implementation deferred. And so what I hope you'll see with my administration is that I'm real big on accountability and implementation strategy. So I have no better answer for the historical things that didn't happen. I think staff acknowledged some of the things that you did say, that perhaps the intent of that position for the business developer was different than what was done. But that is not, my commitment is to be more deliberate about that moving forward. I ask if Mr., if DeLong or our CFO has anything else to add before we move on to the next one?
So on page 25 of the budget booklet, we show the staffing history. That's in the manager's letter, so you can see how the trend has moved. And then, Jeff, there was another page that shows staffing.
Yeah, Personnel section starts on page 314, and that lists all of the positions by department. Just remember, this concludes the original, on the original budget. So we did, we are recommending removing three of those positions right now. So this will show three less in the final fiscal plan.
So overall, instead of 31, it would be 28?
29 we had in there, so it'd be 26 net.
26 net, I'm sorry. And compared to, just give us indication, and I apologize, I don't have the document in front of me, but I do recall some in the past five years, for transparency to the public, what have the ads been when you factor in all the amendments?
Yeah, I mean, at Old Point was 1,492 employees in 2014. You know, we've gone up since then, but that was, our biggest drop was minus 101 people in that particular year. So since that time, it's, so we've added 20 in 2019, and 22 in 2018.
Okay. Okay. Regarding the equity fund, we had a session on capital, and Mr. Omonte is unable to be with us today, particularly with, and we talked about equity and balance distribution. And with the mobility, specifically recall that the, I think it was the five-year plan, where overall, there was balanced distribution among the various wards.
Correct.
And where in some years, there may be unequal distribution, and we particularly talked about on the infrastructure side, that the way the projects are prioritized are based on the ability to restore. What we prioritize, the streets that are most needed, the repair first, and then, excuse me, the streets that are in least need of repair, to save those. And so that affects the distribution. And I will defer to Deputy City Manager Long to probably give more insight and remind the commission of our conversation around equity. Because we were deliberate this year to make sure that the investments were more intentional than just a subsidy from the general fund of $750,000.
Yes. So overall, you'll recall that there are, it was about, I think, $71 million total of capital we talked about being positioned, being location-specific. And of that, about $25 million was in neighborhoods of focus. So, which includes part of the first ward and part of the third ward, but none of the second ward. And so that, and that is roughly proportional to the amount of land area within the neighborhoods of focus. So it, that we, that test, I think, works out pretty well. We do strive for balanced distribution, and that's a concept that actually Commissioner Liner is responsible for in terms of suggesting it for vital streets. And that has worked out well. And we have balanced, we can have proven every year that over time, things balance out. And that is attributable to the hard work of Rick Treves in some ways, our Assistant City Engineer, but also attributable to attention to that particular concept. Now, balance and distribution is one measure, equity is another. And we have to be careful not to confuse the two, but balance and distribution is part of the equity discussion. So in the overall capital plan, there are major drivers of investment. And the, when you look at the gross numbers this year, there are some significant projects that are happening in wards other than the third ward. And so that's why the numbers are a little, they're, why the numbers are the way they are.
And what are they, Eric? I thought it was 20 million in one ward, and 22 in another, and six in third, but I could be wrong there.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to find that in the, in the handoffs, too, because I have a number of different slides.
It wasn't presented, that's part of why I thought we should talk about it, because it wasn't presented here, was through a different conversation that they came out.
Yeah, because I'm seeing, like, under Health and Environment, new capital investment, 57.6 million and 18.9 in the neighborhoods of focus, which is, which is a little over a third.
We're recalling the information now, but let me talk about the outlier projects, the change performance on that metric. So, for example, in the first ward, there is a guide-free avenue that is a street and sewer reconstruction that is massive. You know, it's a huge trunk sewer that is, and overall, the project is approximately $9 million. So that is a big investment to, for that particular street that has water, sewer, and vital streets money in it that drives, that actually shows higher value in the first ward.
So if I can interrupt, just so that I'm following you correctly, but I thought Vital Streets was excluded from the, from the numbers that we were talking about. Is this only the sewer and?
I believe this is everything.
Okay.
Okay. So then, City Facilities gives the second ward an unfair advantage, because everything that, the City Hall, the 1120 Monroe, all that is, most of it, you know, the big stuff that we're doing is located in the second ward.
And that includes, like, the HVAC and?
Yep. Yep. So there's $5 million roughly of investment there in the second ward.
Is someone adding this up, or should I be doing my own math? Because I'm very interested in the numbers, and I'm not trying to be offensive as much as I just want to know.
No, I have a, I have a
Oh, okay, good.
Chart that I can share with you.
Okay.
So then, there's Lion Square, that is 1.4 million. There's parking work that happens downtown. Street lighting is, most of the heavy infrastructure is not located in the third ward. Third ward has lights, but not the big transformers and other stuff. Coldbrook decommissioning, which is, the building is located in the second ward, and there are several projects that are located in the, that are located in the second ward as well. The water transmission main projects are associated with that. Overall, that project is about $16 million. And then there's the Hastings Street construction in the second ward. So there are several significant projects that, you know, could be considered outliers. So when you factor those, if you choose to accept that line of logic, then things start to even up a little bit. So, and then we get, then we're more balanced and distribution at that point, balanced and distributed at that point.
Okay. I'd like to see the chart, but I do think that's helpful to kind of rattle off some of those items, because I would see, you know, any city-owned property, you know, as being kind of something that's impacting the entire city, as opposed to kind of slicing it by ward. So I do understand how, you know, it could appear as though in one ward, there are more dollars being spent. So thank you for kind of sharing those specific projects. But I still thought that during the conversation, we had excluded some of those city-specific projects.
We had excluded some projects. We excluded those that are in the water and sewer system that are, that serve, they're like the integrated system, they serve the entire community or a regional system. So we had excluded those. So our capital spend overall is more than the $71 million, because we'd already have excluded those things that are clearly citywide.
And Commissioner May also remind, the conversation I think you're referring to, that was a preliminary conversation before we formally proposed the budget. And so we were still in assessment mode of our capital projects and budgeting and allocations and really deep diving, trying to understand the projects by ward, especially by neighborhoods of focus. So that was earlier on. What I think would be better is exactly what you suggested earlier, if we can recapitulate some of the numbers and then send it out to the entire commission. So it's, I mean, it's probably easier to see it than to hear it.
Yeah, because I do agree with Commissioner Liner. It is a little, I think the information could be a little skewed if we're talking about adding in the $8 million HVAC system here for City Hall, which is a asset management, you know, issue where we have to take care of our buildings, right? Or the Coldbrook, which we know is, we've had to recommission for a long time, which is related to our water department, or the massive trunk line in the first ward.
Or a fire station that's in the first ward that probably predominantly serves the third ward.
Right, the fire station, exactly. A lot of people think it's the third ward, but
it's not. Yeah. So that would be helpful, maybe even like MAP.
To split those out, yeah.
And Allison reminds me that it gets even more confusing when, so say, for example, the Division Fire Station. So it's physically located in the first ward, but it serves a fair portion of the third ward.
Right.
third ward.
Right.
So how do you count it? You know, and so the, the, um, the, the counting is, um, can be maddening.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at, um, excuse me, page one-twenty-seven of the fiscal plan, it does show the capital project detail, and you'll note there are just facilities alone, there's about twenty-six million dollars over the five-year projections of this plan. So if you consider those citywide, they don't show up in your, in the third particular, you know, third ward, um, but there's significant invest, investment in those facilities per our asset management plan, so.
And specifically to city facilities?
Yep. So let us, uh, work on a summary communication and get back with you on that.
Great. So if you can kind of rethink that and, and send us some information, that'd be helpful.
The, the second, uh, I understood is, uh, the schedule or the timeline to implement, um, some of the redeployment, as I understood the question. I don't want to make sure, um...
Mine was really specific to, um, the, the crossing, yeah.
Traffic, park, crossing guard, crossing guard.
Because I think, I think it was clear about the ordinance, there would be an ordinance amendment in June for, um, the parking citation.
Parking, exactly.
So, yeah, but the, the piece that says state law limits our flexibility seems very vague, and even as we went past that, I think it wasn't, um, detailed enough about, okay, what are the next steps we'll take regarding that.
So you, you got a very detailed memorandum from the city attorney, client, client privilege, that went into much more detailed around that.
Yeah, the background, I think I have, but our next steps is what I'm kind of looking for, the timeframe.
And so, so I, I don't want to rush, um, that, um, discussion, because I want to consider that along with, um, all the other areas of redeployment. We're, we're hiring a police chief now. I think this, that's a major, um, operational decision, and the impact of it not only, um, impacts scheduling, but there, there are some labor, um, considerations that we need to consider in that. And so I want to be very deliberate about, um, that, as we just got the legal opinion this past...
Weekend.
Weekend. So I'm not prepared to make any commitments, um, beyond, uh, having that conversation more in depth with the police departments.
After the new city, the, um, new chief is hired.
Well, we'll, we'll talk more, because I think, as you, as you noted, we are prepared to assist the department in, um, parking enforcement, but I think we can talk to the current, uh, chief, current command staff, but, um, we need a little bit more time to, to process how that might be implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the best I can do on that one.
That was good. I mean, after the new chief is good. That gives me a point of reference.
Uh, the other...
Well, and, and I'll follow up to that, Commissioner, as you press on my email. I asked for some, a little, some additional research also to find out, in addition to Detroit, what other cities are doing.
Yeah.
And, and I do think that that would be helpful for us to consider as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And then lastly, on, on the, uh, the lead, uh, remediation, um, I, again, uh, I look at the budget holistically, um, you know, we do have to be mindful of each component, whether it's revenue-based or it's, uh, paid from fees or, or taxes, but holistically, it's, it's, it's the half a billion dollars, whether it's general funded, whether it's revenue-funded, grant-funded. And so, um, if the, if, if we can supplement offset general fund costs with grant funding, that is, and it's, it's reliable, it's sustainable, that is responsible fiscal management. Um, if there's a commitment around, uh, sense around the dais that we, uh, need to do more matching of, uh, some of the funding, or prioritize, uh, some of the, um, uh, funding that, that we could be reallocating to other places, to remote health and safety, that, that's a discussion I'm willing, willing to have. But I did ask the staff to holistically look at all the resources, whether it was general fund, non-general fund, to look at our total commitment and investment into, to that program. So that, that is, that is, um, uh, our discussion to date.
Yeah, and, and mine really was just to make sure that my colleague was fully aware of the city's commitment to lead. And I do think we should have a conversation about, you know, at this level, about how we would want to move forward. I think all of us, you know, frequently talk about lead and the crisis that we have in our city, um, as we're even thinking about the crisis that's in Flint. And I think that it would be great to have a full, detailed discussion specifically about that topic, Mayor. And I don't know, you know, at which point, you know, maybe at a COW meeting that we could talk about it, because I do think that we need to have a significant, and I, I think there are a number of things that we can do, and you and I have talked about it, um, in detail about some of our options, but I also think that we have to put our, you know, some skin in the game. I think we financially should sacrifice for the impact of the children in our city. I think, you know, I frequently have said this before, you know, you can't do the extra credit without doing the homework. So that river will be really nice with bubbles in it, but if the children are continuing to be poisoned with lead, then, you know, it doesn't matter that the river is beautiful. And I think as we're looking at these very significant investments in our city, we too need to be looking at how to invest long-term in the remediation of lead in the homes that are in our city. Um, I also think, you know, like the, um, sewer line split, you know, kind of this long-term investment that takes, you know, a number of years, but over time, if you do a little bit each year, you'll see the impact later. And City Manager, I think the two of us have had conversations about, you know, how do we leverage some of the dollars that are coming into the city so that there is impact, um, and, and, and making some type of positive, um, dent into, um, this lead crisis that we have. So I, I look forward to having that discussion.
And, and I, I'm happy to follow up on that as well, because I do think it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach and multi-jurisdictional, and we've talked about this, um, before. I do think there's, there's an enforcement issue, there is the work that currently is being done with the University of Chicago to look at our own internal ordinances and policies to make sure that they're the best of the best. Um, and then there's also the long-term financial sustainability. We know the price tag is in the, well over a hundred million dollars long-term, uh, and that also is going to require what, you know, you've pushed for and we're moving forward with around the education outreach and awareness. Uh, and so I do, I do think having that very comprehensive approach, uh, so I know that the, the research from the University of Chicago is supposed to be done in June, that will come before our subcommittee, and then it'll come before the full committee of the whole. So I anticipate we'll have those conversations pretty quickly.
That's great.
Mayor, if I could, just to Commissioner Liner's point, um, kind of project funding parallelism, uh, when we speak of the, the river project, it has multi-sources of funding. There's federal funding, there's state funding, there's local funding, there's county funding, there's private funding for it. And so, um, I think the same, and, and, and our local funding is, is not the majority of, of the resources. So we leverage the funding of other streams significantly. And so as we talk about, um, the lead media, uh, remediation, I think, um, to your point, we need to look at funding at all levels, uh, federal, state, county, uh, city, and if there are opportunities for, um, uh, private participation in, um, being, um, um, lack of a better term, good neighbors in some of the, the areas where development is occurring, where there's, there are significant, um, populations that are impacted. I think we need to look at it holistically, but to solely, um, look at the general fund, um, portion to contribute to that would, would not be consistent with how other significant projects are funded that, that involve a significant amount of capital investment.
Yeah. It's... Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment that I do appreciate Commissioner Liner's bringing this up. I'm, I look forward to a report to the full commission, because you two have been on the task force and we have not.
Mm-hmm.
But again, it's to look at all these jurisdictions and even to consider, as we receive income from marijuana, to perhaps set that aside, as we will, the, the county will, as one more source of income.
Yep.
Yeah. Your great city manager had that suggestion, too.
We're going to get there. All right, anything else, Commissioners? All right. Thank you very much. We will now move to our second item, uh, and that is, uh, and I, I'm going to pause real quickly before Ms. Bohach comes up. I know Commissioner Moody needs to, uh, leave us, and he'll be back this evening, so, um, he'll be excused from this portion of COW. Uh, so let's go to our second resolution. This is a resolution approving funding awards for CDBG home and JAG programs and submission of the fiscal year 2020 annual action plan. So move?
Support.
Good morning. This is, uh, the end to our long journey of our funding process that starts all the way back at the end of January. Uh, so today you're asked to approve, um, local funding awards for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, and the Justice Assistance Grant Programs. Um, the resolution also authorizes execution of contractual agreements with our partner organizations, um, who will be using those resources, as well as allows the Community Development Department to submit its, um, the FY-20 Annual Action Plan, uh, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The annual action plan serves as our formal application for, um, receipt of these funds. Um, when we first came to you, um, presented funding recommendations was March twenty-sixth, and at that time, um, the levels were established using planning estimates, because we did not know what our award levels would be at that time, because Congress had not officially appropriated those resources. Um, so this particular item now has, um, final numbers, and there has been adjustments, and I'll quickly, um, walk through those. Um, the, um, CDBG and home programs, actually, we received less than we had anticipated. Um, we did anticipate a reduction in home, but we were off by, um, just, um, approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars, and our CDBG came in, um, just over fifty-nine thousand dollars less than, um, we had anticipated. Uh, those initial recommendations to you provided contingency provisions, so in the event that the, um, final award levels were either higher or less, um, than what was anticipated, uh, we could move forward with, um, some, with those, sorry, those contingency provisions allowed us to make decisions about, um, what the priorities would be for increases and decreases of funding. So the, uh, resolution actually takes into consideration, um, for CDBG, the funding increases were reversed for the neighborhood associations, who would have received approximately forty-five-hundred dollars each as an increase, um, and that is in accordance with those contingency provisions. And then related to the home awards, um, the funding was reduced for the ICCF Nonprofit Housing Corporation Tapestry Square Project. So approximately twenty-four thousand dollars was reduced out of that total alec, uh, award. Um, and then, not part of the contingency provisions, but what we needed to do was to also reduce the Community Development Department's administrative, um, funds. So, um, just over nine thousand dollars of a reduction there. Uh, the annual action plan requires a thirty-day comment period, and you held a public hearing and received some comments in person, and then there was also receipt of three comments in writing that was forwarded to you. And during that process, it was made, um, brought to our attention, um, the increased demand for affordable housing, um, services, and that was discussed with the RFP Committee. And these recommend, or sorry, these, uh, this resolution actually considers, um, a five-thousand-dollar increase for the Fair Housing Center, so going from seventy-five-thousand to eighty-thousand, um, and reduces then the five, by five-thousand-dollar Steeple Town Neighborhood Services Project. In the initial recommendations, there was a ten-thousand-dollar increase for Steeple Town over last year's level, so this would still provide a five-thousand-dollar increase over what they received last year. So, one more change that we did not anticipate, um, was that Samaritas, um, the project which we put, um, had recommended three-hundred-thousand dollars of CDBG funds, that developer has withdrawn its application, um, did not desire to use Community Development Block Grant Funds for, for the project. Um, this was gap financing, they've assured us that they will be soliciting, or sorry, securing, uh, securing that, that funding someplace else, um, that will work better with their project. And so, because it's a tax credit program, um, there should be no problem that they will move forward with the development of those units, which was fifty-two units, you may recall, for senior living. Um, so the project will still go, be going forward, but not using CDBG dollars. So that gave us three-hundred-thousand dollars of CDBG funds to allocate, and these are the, um, types of funds that can't be used for public services or administrative, um, activities, so it has to be in the more of the bricks and mortar. So the recommendation was that we, um, sorry, the, this resolution, in consultation with the RFP Committee, was to increase, uh, home repair services, um, by sixty-thousand dollars. That was in the contingency provisions for increases in CDBG. And then there's the, the amount that was remaining, we put into the, um, Neighborhood Infrastructure Program, which provides you flexibility throughout the year, um, to fund various projects that may impact neighborhoods. So from time to time, it may be tree planting, it could be, um, improvements to, um, business corridors in neighborhoods, um, streetscapes, things of that nature. So those are on a project basis and come to you throughout the year. I think that covers it for the changes. Do you have any questions?
All right. Commissioners, any questions? Of, of course, we're disappointed at the reduction, although we've known for years that, uh, CDBG funding and home funding and JAG funding is always, uh, a difficult ask, and it's difficult to get the support at the federal level for those funds. So thank you for making those adjustments. Uh, any additional questions or comments?
I just want to say that I had a chance to debrief a bit with Samaritas, and they are fully committed to bringing that project to, to completion, and we're going to debrief a bit more next week, because they'd love to be a partner with the city, uh, in developing more affordable housing.
Yeah. Yep.
I just wanted to quickly... Quickly say thank you, Connie, for, um, bringing this before the commission with, I mean, there was a lot of running around in the last few weeks, as the funding streams changed, and just trying to get the three of us together to try and have those conversations again. So thank you for that, and, um, yeah, I think this will be great.
Yeah. Thanks. And I will add my thanks to the committee members, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Parton, Commissioner Liner, who I know you spend a lot of time on this every single year, um, so thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Could I just thank, um, Community Development Staff, Aaron Banschoff, Joanna Schulte, and Jose Cabal, who really put a lot of time and energy into the whole application process that starts back in January, so it's a lot of work.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, and I want, you beat me to it, but I want to thank staff, Connie, and you, and, uh, appreciate being able to have this opportunity, Mayor, and you pointed us to looking this all over. We are disappointed that we had hoped to give the neighborhoods each a little bit of a, a bonus, but that would have come out of that, um, fifty thousand dollars that we did not get, so that's unfortunate. And I would, um, encourage the three of us to perhaps have a conversation about the Neighborhood Infrastructure Program dollars. Uh, it, it reminds me of the conversation we just had with the city manager, that we want to not have budget amendments throughout the year. There may be an opportunity for us to think that through more thoroughly. We just had a, pretty much an online and phone conversation before, so we really didn't have to, because this came up at the last minute.
Yeah, I would, I would welcome you three meeting to, to think through those dollars and potential recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. All right, with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next up will take us a resolution approving our fiscal year 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Program Funding Awards. Uh, Connie, you want to tell us about these dollars? Oh, thank you.
Support?
Moved and supported. Connie, you want to tell us about this? Sorry.
I have to recuse myself, as I am a member of the Grand Rapids Urban League, so I'll go to my office and engage in some tasks like sharpening pencils and...
All right. All right. You are excused.
I'll return upon it. Thank you.
I'll ask you to come back in for an abstention vote.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead, Connie. You want to, uh, share with us briefly about these funds? Because we still have, I think, twenty more items.
This will be very brief, because, um, goes through the same process that we talked about previously, um, and this is for the Emergency Solutions Grants Program. Um, and good news is, is that we, um, received, um, nine thousand dollars more than we anticipated, and we, when we came forward to the contingency provisions for that, um, was to provide addition, was to increase, if there was an increase, um, Urban, Grand Rapids Urban League for Prevention Services. Um, and so that would be applied to that allocation. So again, this, um, resolution authorizes, um, the funding awards for agencies, authorizes us to, um, or approves the funding levels, authorizes us to execute contracts, and then, again, um, tags along with the submission for the annual action plan.
The only other comment, Mayor, if I could, um, I know that my colleague, Commissioner Moody, who is gone, asked the question about, um, the home funds and, or the, the...
Yes, Chief.
What's the support to help people with evictions or something like that? And I know the Urban League is one of the recipients of that. I know he inquired about that, and I think we need to get a report to him, and I don't know if that's...
So the eviction prevention program is, uh, a partnership with the Sixty-first District Court.
Yeah, not that then. It's whatever the dollars that are tied to, to this, these, um, dollars, and maybe it's Emergency Solutions Grant, but I thought Urban League and there were a couple other, um...
Home repair.
Home Repair maybe another, but Commissioner Moody wanted a report, and I just want to make sure he has either received that or he'll get that.
We'll follow up with him.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions about the ESG funds? Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and then Commissioner Jones will abstain.
Jones?
He's like, I'm out. Commissioner Jones, any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving the fiscal year 2020 budget for the City of Grand Rapids Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority.
So moved.
Support? All right, so Commissioners, we have a number of these budgets coming before us, so Ms. Kara Wood will be before us, summarizing each of them.
There was a handout, too.
There is a handout.
There's a presentation, and I think, Mayor, we're going to try to couple the briefing on several of them at once.
That would be great. City Attorney, do I need to read all of them, or can I just have Kara provide the, the review, overall review, and then go through each individually? Okay, okay. All right, so we'll sum, we'll get a summary of all of them right now with the initial presentation, and then we'll go through each of them individually and call, call the question individually.
Great. So the 11 budgets before you are summarized in the spreadsheet here, indicating the revenues and appropriations that each board or authority is seeking. These have been recommended for your consideration by the various appointed boards and authorities. The Economic Development Department, revenues and expenditures are included in these budgets and represent seven authorized positions that administer the 11 boards and authorities. All combined, the 2020 budget requests almost $17.4 million. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and their local Brownfield Revolving Fund budgets make up a large percentage, almost two-thirds of the total. The Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority comprises about another quarter, and then the remaining 10% includes the sixth quarter improvement district authorities and one business improvement district, along with the Economic Development Corporation The next slide indicates the resources and where they actually come from. So indicating on this visual, you'll see that the revenue for these boards exceeds $12.4 million, the majority of which comes from tax increment revenues, sorry, $17.4 million. 60% comes from tax increment revenues. Several of them plan to use a combined total of almost $5 million of their respect, respective available fund balances to cover a portion of their expenditures this year. Tax increment provides the most significant source of revenue. In addition, you'll see their state grants, as well as general fund subsidies, and fees and special assessment funds as well. On the right-hand side, in appropriations, you can see that over 90% of the funds are anticipated to be spent on developer reimbursements and program initiatives. So less than 10% of the budget expenditures actually goes toward operational costs and debt payments. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on the budgets before you consider each of them, but I would also like to thank the staff that's been involved in bringing these to you for consideration, not only the departmental staff, Jono, Emily, Christian, Jessica, and Reggie, but also the other interdepartmental staff that is part of this process in evaluating all of the details within these budgets, treasurers, assessors, and fiscal services, along with the board members that have participated in this process as well.
Mayor, I also want to add my thanks to Director Wood for her work on, on this and her very well summarized executive overview of items four through 13.
Thank you. And I know we have Commissioners serving on most, if not all, of these boards and commissions, so I want to thank all of you for your service, and I know you've been a part of working on these budgets and approving them in the individual SIDS and BIDS and Smart Zones, so thank you for your work on that. Okay, so for the, for the first one that is on the table before us now, are there any specific questions about the Smart Zone budget? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next will be the resolution approving the fiscal year 2020 budget for the City of Grand Rapids Economic Development Corporation.
So moved.
Support. All right, Commissioners, any questions about that budget? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will be a resolution approving the budget for the Grand Rapids West Side Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
All right, Commissioners, anything to add to that? Nice work over there on the west side. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving the budget for the Uptown Business Improvement District.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. I see members from the Uptown Sid and Bid here today, so thank you for your work as well, appreciate it. Next that will take us to the resolution approving the budget for the Uptown Business Improvement District. Or, sorry, Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, any questions or comments on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. That'll take us to the budget for the North Quarter Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, glad to see that they have some money in the bank, so nice work. Commissioner Kelly? Not like South Town, but.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving the budget for the Grand Rapids South Division Granville Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
All right, Commissioners, any questions on that one? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. That'll take us to South Town, a resolution to approve their budget for the South Town Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. That will take us to the budget approval for the Michigan Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. And next that will take us to a resolution for the budget for the Grand Rapids Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2020 Downtown Improvement District Budget. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, and we have Mr. Tim Kelly, CEO and President of DGRI and the DDA. He is here to present this budget, as well as the following two. So he'll present on the DID, the DDA, and Monroe Tifa.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Kara got her through 11 budgets in two slides, I'm going to take a little bit more, but we'll move through it quickly because I know you're, you are jammed for time. So happy to be here with you this morning. I am going to give you an overview, as the mayor mentioned, of the three fiduciary boards that DGRI manages, those being the Downtown Improvement District, Downtown Development Authority, and the Monroe North Tax Increment Finance Authority. Before I get into some of the detail on those budgets, and let me go to full screen here, one second. There we go. Quick word on process, so similar to, to much of the work at the city, we begin our budget process with our fiduciary boards early in the new year. That starts with conversations with our alliances, so our citizen-based alliance groups that help make sure that we're prioritizing projects in keeping with the, the goals of the community for downtown. From there, we move into discussions with each of the fiduciary boards. I will point out that all three of them approved the, and recommended the budgets that you are seeing this morning. The last step in that process will be formal adoption at their next scheduled meetings. Just to highlight the work of our alliances, our citizen advisors, so we each year appoint members of the community to serve and advise us on our community projects and priorities. This year, we have 93 citizen advisors on our alliances, 40 of those are new to the organization, and we continue to strive to make representatives there, representative of this city as a whole, from a demographic perspective, and so we, we, we think that's important to make sure that voices throughout the community are represented. And no, no surprise, this year, as in the past four full fiscal years, we are full-scale into GR Forward implementation, so very similar to the work that the city has done with their strategic plan, we have aligned our budgets to implement GR Forward, and so most of what you will see recommended is a direct outcome of that. We certainly allow opportunities for new ideas to emerge through staff, as well as conversations with community partners, but the bulk of the work that we are doing is implementation on GR Forward. And just, I don't like to assume that everyone remembers the goals that are in that plan, but if you, if you need a reminder, they're, they're up there, and I'll give you a little bit more breakdown here shortly. Starting out with our Downtown Improvement District Budget, that's the reminder of our boundary, the DID is entering their fifth and final year of authorization under their, the current plan, and so much of the work is similar to what has been happening over the past four fiscal years, so big focus on plannings and beautification, but also maintenance and as well as safety, so our downtown clean team and ambassador programs are funded partially through the, through the DID as well as the DDA. And then, snowmelt operations for three of the snowmelt systems in downtown. New this year, a couple of priority capital projects, our Fulton Street medians, the replanning of the Monroe Center planners, update to the Vandenberg Statue Planning, and then also looking for implementation opportunities as an outcome of the River Corridor Design Guidelines, as well as, well as our recently adopted street space design guidelines. Two new programs I also want to highlight, one, because we are going to need to go through a reauthorization period with the DID, we are going to be looking to hire a consultant to help guide through that process. The existing plan formula has not been updated since 2001, so we think it's time to, to take another look at that. In addition, we have included money here for business support operations, so this, that'll be in partnership with the DDA, and obviously with our partners here at the city and Chamber of Commerce, but there is funding allocated within the Downtown Improvement District Budget for that.
Tim, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Can you go back to that slide? What, what is included in the A87 cost? Is that $536,000?
No, no, that would be the $35,149.
That's the third, oh, so then the colors are.
The shades are a little different.
Thank you. I, I saw the blue, and I'm like, that is a lot for A87 costs.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure Jeff wouldn't mind that, but we'll, yeah.
I was going to say, you don't even, you don't even have an office in City Hall anymore, so.
So that, that $35,000 is the 80s.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
I have a question. So how many ambassadors do we have now, Tim?
It fluctuates depending on the season we're moving into, the, the high season, obviously, with events in, in spring and summertime. I think at this point, from an ambassador's team perspective, we're around 15, 15 to 20, but there are, we're actually in the process of hiring now.
Okay.
I'll jump now to the.
No.
I'll jump into the DDA budget now. So, again, no, no surprise, most of the, the projects highlighted here will be from GR Forward. 82 projects, programs, and initiatives in total is 100% of those, of the discretionary expenditures therein are, are directly related to the implementation of the plan, and I'll highlight some of the, the key ones for the coming fiscal year. Related to the river restoration, partnering with Monroe North Tax Increment Finance Authority and some of our other community partners on a governance plan for the River Corridor, making sure that the public investments that, that we know are going to be coming here are going to be made and sustainably managed. So that's a process that we look to kick off early this fiscal year. In addition, Lion Square implementation, so we've been doing a, a lot of design work on this project for, for a couple of years now, and we're thankful to be at a point where we can move forward with implementation, so that is something that we can move forward on this calendar year in partnership with the city and the, the surrounding landowners. And in addition, continuing on the implementation from the river, River For All Guidelines, the River Trail Crossings in Michigan and Bridge Street, working with our partners at Mobile GR and the city to get that implemented this year. Related to the downtown neighborhood, we continue to carry funding for affordable housing initiatives, and we recently released an RFQ, hopefully you all saw a copy, copy of that. We are soliciting ideas on how we can be, participate in the providing of affordable housing in downtown, and it's a community goal that was established in GR Forward, and we continue to make it a priority. Also looking to do community, similar to the Arena South process that was done for the disposition of Areas Four and Five, looking to move into a process to imagine the, the development and disposition of Areas Seven, Eight, and Nine on the west side, would want, obviously need to do that in collaboration with the city, but given the amount of attention in that area and in that neighborhood, I think there's a, a need for a conversation so that the community priorities are clearly articulated. Lastly, in Goal Two, we've provided funding for implementation of the Hart Side Quality of Life Plan. That would include the public restroom facilities in Hart Side on Division Avenue, in addition to funding for a public inebriate center, which is in place currently at Mel Trotter, but, which is in need of some additional funding, we want to be a partner in that initiative. And then also, our downtown neighbor network, which was reaching, recently launched, we continue to provide funding for that to make sure that the voices in that group are, are being heard as our downtown neighbor, neighborhood grows with residential density. Continuing to move now to our mobility plans, a lot of work here in the capital and infrastructure side, a significant project will be the Division Avenue Reconstruction, which I know the city has funding for. In addition, continuing to partner with Mobile GR and the Rapid on the investments in transit and mobility shelter improvements, some of those we'll look to see this year, but with the bulk of the ones in downtown coming next calendar year. Obviously, continuing to support the Dash, which has seen some tremendous ridership gains in the, in the recent year, we want to make sure that that, that amenity is continued to be offered for our downtown residents and visitors. And then also looking at a revamp to our wayfinding system. We know that the existing signs are dated, and so we want to work with, with our partners to implement new designs so that people can navigate downtown freely. Goal Four is all about economic development, so this is where, I mentioned previously, we have funding for business support services, so working with the city and Chamber of Commerce to potentially fund a position that, you know, the, I think, the program for which that person would, would implement is to be determined, but we recognize the need for support services in downtown on, for, for business support services, and so we're going to continue to provide funding there. Also wanting to enhance our program for ground floor investment, so we recently provided funding for Ambiance GR to go into the old rags to riches spot, that's a program that we want to continue and expand, and so we are allocating money in the budget this year as well. And then, just given the amount of development that's occurring in downtown, wanting to continue to work with those developers to make sure that we have active ground floor spaces, so we have, we have, in our development agreement with Studio Park, we have space set aside for a business incubator, and I think we want to continue that program as well as, as projects develop. Lastly, related to other capital improvements, so in our Goal Five category of public space improvements, a number of capital projects are at a point where we think they can move forward this year, in addition to Lion Square, looking, of course, at Calder Plaza, that's, design work is going to be completed here in the calendar year. We are allocating money in the fiscal year 20 and 21 budget to help bring Phase One to fruition, and we're going to continue to work with our partners to, to make that a reality. Another one would be the Van Andel Arena Plaza, so we have done design work with our partners at the CAA that is going to be finishing up this year, and again, another significant public space that will be ready for improvement. And the last one I'll highlight is the Rosa Parks Restoration, so in participating on that conservancy board, there's going to be some improvements that are required to update the park, and so we, we were able to provide funding in this year's budget for that as well. In terms of GR Forward goal breakdown, you kind of see how that translates into the budget, so $11.2 million is dedicated specifically to implementation. The Goal Five category obviously has the bulk of that funding, because that's where those capital projects live. And then taken in context overall with the full DDA budget you see here, I will point out that the debt service, $7.2 million of that is for the Van Andel Arena bonds, and so when, when, if you take that away, the, the majority of our funding is going towards GR Forward implementation.
And, and, Tim, remind the full commission, we just talked about this at our DDA meeting, remind us when that debt service is paid off? It's coming up.
2022.
2022, so just a couple more years, and we'll have that debt service paid off.
Exactly. And then, just three more slides here, the, the last budget I'll review is the Monroe North Tax Increment Finance Authority, that is our sliver up in Monroe North between Sixth Street Bridge and Cole Brook to the north. The majority of the, the funding in this year's budget is related to public space improvements, so they'll be a partner in the river governance discussion, as well as finding opportunities for additional public improvements to implement street space guidelines, so we have funding in the budget for Ottawa and Mason Avenue, so improvements there. And then also, the exercise equipment, which was funded last year, is being implemented now, we, we're hoping to partner with the Parks Department on new opportunities to improve Canal Street Park, and then they are a beneficiary of the Dash service as well, and so they're providing funding in this year's budget. Here you see the breakdown by goal, total budget request for the Tifa is just over $1 million.
Nice.
I think I got through it all in, in my allotted time.
It's impressive.
Happy to take any questions.
So Commissioners, Tim went over the DID, the DDA, and Monroe Tifa, you have questions? You have questions for one or any of those commissioners?
Tim, I know we had this conversation, but we've had for a few years a civilian or someone give public comment about a, at Rosa Parks Circle, a...
A visitor center.
Visitor center, thank you. And I know we've talked about that, and I know you're going to do some research just to kind of see, you know, where, what would work best here in Grand Rapids, and I also remember that visitor centers used to be something very popular, and then they kind of went away with technology, but there are a lot of communities who are now revisiting, pun intended, a visitor's center. And so I'm just curious to know where you are with that research, because quite frankly, I think it's a really good idea, and he's been so tenacious, I know not here, just at the city commission, but he's been to a number of bodies kind of sharing this suggestion.
Yeah, and often at the DDA and DID meetings. So I think there's two things there. One is about wayfinding, and I think we all recognize the need for improved wayfinding systems in downtown. The existing signs are dated, and so those need to be updated, but also, you know, working with the existing technology that we have at hand now. So I think we're certainly dedicated to that. Our street space guidelines talked about that. The River For All Guidelines talked about improved wayfinding along the river, once it's what we all expect it to be. Specific to a visitor's center, in conversations with, you know, people that are experts in this field, and particularly with experienced Grand Rapids, when they do surveys and when they talk to people in other communities, they find that more often than not, these are being shut down, and they're just not, the infrastructure requirements to provide a facility like that, I think outweigh the costs. And so what we found is that, you know, in communities across the country, those visitor centers are not needed. The second piece of that, however, is that, you know, Experienced Grand Rapids always does surveys for people that are visiting town, and they haven't found that people are having difficulty navigating the city.
Thanks, thank you. I know the other component was to, also, and I think we talked about this too, and we made some changes to the usage of the Calder. We talked about having someplace where people could purchase items that are city-specific, and that too, I think combining those two discussions would be, you know, worth continuing.
Yeah, and maybe it would, this isn't necessarily for Tim, but I'm looking at my colleague on the Experienced Grand Rapids Board. It may be useful to have Experienced Grand Rapids provide a report back to the full commission. They do surveys, but they also collect a lot of other data about tourism. That's very insightful as we think about not just being an attraction for tourists, but the economic impact that that has, not just on downtown, but the region, and we can get that, we can get that to you.
Great.
Yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, to Commissioner Lanier's concern about the kiosk and the visitor's center, that is one of the roles of the ambassadors, in case you want a job. But, and I do remember, I went into what I thought was a presentation, and I wound up getting trained. Yes, and I came out with a pen, so be careful. I wanted to ask you, Tim, about housing. Are you thinking about, I mean, I think it's great that you're going to take on the affordable housing or housing component, I should say, because that's certainly an economic development issue. Are you thinking mixed income? Because we'd certainly like to see that not only within a neighborhood, but also within buildings. Can you elaborate on, or aren't you even that far along in that conversation?
So the RFQ that was issued last week is really about affordable housing in downtown and housing affordability, how it translates into a specific project. We're not quite at that point yet. We're really interested in soliciting ideas about how we can be a participant in that discussion, because since it is a goal that was established in GR Forward.
Yeah.
It's a pretty open-ended RFP.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, you know, looking for innovative ideas about how this money could be used.
Okay. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to Hartside Neighborhood Association because of their willingness to expand their boundaries and truly make the whole downtown area a residential neighborhood, so really appreciate the work that Jim Shaw and Letitia and others have, their board has done to make that happen.
Yeah, and we'll be sure too to make sure the commission is informed about the outcome of that RFP. It was written, if you're familiar with the RP that the Fry Foundation put out, it mirrors that.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I will move forward with calling the questions. So the first one, the resolution that's on the table to approve the 2020 Downtown Improvement District budget, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next is a resolution approving the budget for the Downtown Development Authority.
So moved.
All right, any final questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next is a resolution approving the Monroe Tiff Increment, Monroe North Tax Increment Finance Authority, or the Monroe Tifa, as we call it. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
All right, next we have a resolution approving the execution of a service agreement with the Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. related to the Uptown Business Improvement District.
Support.
All right, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Solis at the Agronomec Development Department. Before you, it's a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of service agreement with Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. on behalf of the Uptown Business Improvement District. On June 11, 2013, the Uptown Bid was established as a special assessment district pursuant to the Principal Shopping Districts and Business Improvements District Act of Act 120 of 1961. Since its establishment, the Uptown Bid has encouraged economic development and redevelopment, focused on creating a desirable and vibrant district through ongoing improvement projects and beautification efforts. So on October 24, 2017, Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. was established pursuant to the Home Rule City Act, Act 279 of 1909. So the purpose of Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. is to strengthen the collaboration between the Uptown Corridor Improvement Authority, the Uptown Business Improvement District, and the Business and Neighborhood Associations to help serve the Uptown community. So this agreement, the city on behalf of the Uptown Bid and Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. will establish a framework to allow Uptown Grand Rapids Inc. to provide services to Uptown Bid and help them with the implementation of the marketing and development plan that they've created. So this agreement was approved by the Uptown Bid Board at their May 6 meeting, and the Uptown Corridor Improvement Authority also approved a separate but similar agreement as well at their May 1 meeting.
Great, thank you. I see members from Uptown here. Was anyone hoping to have a chance to say a few words? No? No? Okay, only for questions, okay. All right, so I'll open it up for questions around this table. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I really wanted to say thank you to Christine Helms-Miletic, who has been serving in the Uptown area for several years and is about to step down, and we will miss you, but hopefully you're not going to be too far away. You've done just an amazing job, Christine, and I know we've called on you a lot for answers to questions and insights that the Uptown Board has provided for us, so thank you all for that. She's not here, but the volunteer of the century, Jay Van Linton, we want to please pass on our thanks, and she got an award for literally being volunteer of the century.
I see that's an official title.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And for our huge listening audience, I just wanted everybody to know it, as we quickly move through these budgets, that there was a lot of scrutiny that was done by Uptown and all of the corridor improvement districts, as well as the Downtown Improvement Authority, and then planning and adherence to approved plans that were laid out before. So I just wanted people to be aware of that, but thank you so much. I'm very excited about your next steps and your nonprofit, and especially because you have had those conversations around how to support some of the city's goals, and very specific to our neighborhood associations, and that collaboration and communication between those is so important, as we know we struggle with that all the time. So once again, you've been the beta testers, and thank you, Uptown, for that.
Yes, well said, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, and the last item before us is a resolution approving the South Division Granville Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and their Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Support.
All right, Jessica, you gonna speak to this as well?
All right, so this resolution is the final approval for the South Division Granville Corridor Improvement Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan. This plan was recommended to you by the South Division Granville CIA Board at their March meeting, and you held a public hearing on April 23rd. So with your approval of this plan, the CIA will begin capturing taxes this upcoming fiscal year.
It's a great plan. So commissioners, any questions? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. One final item, city manager has stepped out, but I want to clarify this because I think it was very confusing on the agendas that were made public. But commissioners, I want to be clear that we, in response to staff request, we will not be having a conversation or voting on the Human Rights Ordinance tonight. That has been postponed. If I recall, we didn't set the date, we just said it would come back to committee of the whole. So I think it's, the language on the, tonight's, what was published tonight is very confusing. I just want to, I want to do two things. One, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that that is not on the agenda to vote on tonight, that more work needs to be done. And then secondly, I want to confirm, I don't believe we need to take any official vote to have it postponed, and that it should be removed from tonight's agenda. Is that, have we had time to clarify that?
That's my understanding. I'll defer to the clerk.
Yeah, because if the resolution said, you know, it wasn't coming back to this meeting, to a future cow, I just had a little question from my staff saying, when, so public knows when they look at the minutes, when was it going to go forward? So I think as long as we keep communication up, we should be fine on that.
Okay, so the meeting tonight, or the agenda for tonight will be amended, that will be removed altogether, so that won't appear on the agenda tonight. So I just want to make that clear, and then also, as city staff continue to work through the logistics and some of the concerns that have come up and the need for some clarification, they will keep us posted and updated about when it will come back to this full body for consideration.
Right, and Mayor, just thank you for mentioning that, just out of transparency. Ninety, about 90% of the language in the ordinance that we've gone through is pretty sufficient. There are a couple of things that we need to add for clarification, but what we're working through is the logistics on the investigation process of any reports for bias-based crime reporting, and that involves working both internally with Office of Adversity and Inclusion, City Attorney's Office, as well as the Police Department, and make sure we have a good, clear investigative process.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, anything else before we adjourn?
I would like to just clarify on the budget amendments. Again, our intent is to be as transparent as possible at the beginning of the year. There possibly could be amendments throughout the year, should there be new sources of funding, or obviously if there need to be reductions due to funding sources, or if we have mandates mandated to do so by state, federal government, et cetera. But we will try to make sure any amendments are cost neutral unless we're legally required to do so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. All right, commissioners, well, we will adjourn momentarily. I want to thank Sarah and Walker for being up here on this busy committee of the whole day. One of these days, one of you may be sitting in this chair, we shall see. And with that, I'll let Walker adjourn us. All right, with that, we're adjourned.